Call me in order.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any questions?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, your second.
Yeah.
And a second, all bayers of the eye.
Aye.
All opposed, approval of the agenda, one item to add. New business, what do you call it?
Uh, specially meant for the Prossley site at the coal.
Okay, visitors and delegations, does anybody want a doctor's?
Please do the motion, sorry. Motion on the other side.
I have a second on, bayers of the eye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Okay, now we're about visitors and delegations. No more than five minutes.
Uh, no, no more than five minutes.
Kevin will get you up right away.
All right. First off, just to let you know that the low quote on that new gear was twenty-three ninety-five, just for informational reasons. We don't need to change the motion or anything else. And then the second thing, I got these quotes from Lycox Enterprise for Rock and Walk and Roll Packers. And we've got one of the walk and roll packers, but it fit into the pockets on the ripper. And now we'll be getting rid of the machines that those rippers had. And they won't fit on the new ones, so the rippers will have to go with them. So now we need to buy, at least buy a connection for the new grader to the new, to the old packer. And that's that first quote of nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And then he's been trying to sell me a second one, so he just threw a code in for a second one and the lift group thing. And that was twenty-eight thousand six ninety. And then he said if we bought both, he'd take the frame off, so the two of them together are thirty-six thousand six ninety. So at a minimum, we need that new lift group to fit on the John Deere, one of the John Deeres. And that'd be ninety-one fifty.
What do you think, Kevin, do you think you should have it on two or?
Yeah, I think so. I'd put it up in Webster probably, since that shop is bigger. Once you get that packer hanging on the back, it's a lot bigger and you need a big shop to get them inside. I would like it, yes.
And then you move them around, you move that one around then if you needed something in another area?
We could move that machine, yeah. They would have to stay on that machine.
What exactly do these do now?
They're like a thirteen-wheeled packer that you pull behind, you don't, only they hook right onto the back. So you lift them up and down with the, like before it was on a ripper, now they have a separate hydraulic. This looks just like a ripper, but it doesn't have the ripper teeth or anything.
To pack the road.
Yep, pack the road. After you blade it, then you pack it with these tires and it holds in place much, much better. Especially if there's moisture.
What, have you used any this year, this last year?
I don't think we did last year, because we had that John Deere sitting here and it has to fit onto the cat. And we never, we never put the ripper, we'd have to put the ripper onto the cats, the snow wing. You can't have the snow wing and the ripper at the same time, you can only have one, so we have to switch them back and forth. In the winter, we take the ripper off and the summer, put it on, so it's a lot of work. And I never got that last year, so. We didn't use it last year, but the year before, we used it out in that Lakewood or Creel Township area quite good.
It never really does a good job on the washboards.
It does, yeah, we had a lot of compliments, a lot of.
And that cost ninety-one fifty?
The attachment to make the, the one we have work now will cost. The one we have now is pretty much worthless unless we get the.
But there's no sense of, if we didn't use one last year and you want to have another one now, you show we have two.
Yep.
You think you'd use that one?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Three hundred and eight fifty, eleven hundred dollars just in savings on freight. They'll take the frame off.
And now it doesn't work? It doesn't have one anymore?
But the, uh, it'll be just one area or two areas of the county you use these in?
Yes, for now. I mean, we could buy them for all of them, but that, I wouldn't have that much money in my budget.
But the John Deeres don't fit?
They won't fit on anything, no.
John Deeres have nothing, something similar to this? Put on theirs, or no?
Well, the, the one we buy, this ninety-one fifty, will go on a John Deere.
They go on a John Deere?
Yes. But see, then that holds up to the frame of the John Deere, so it won't go onto a cat. So.
So you all, if you all for the cat, you go by this nineteen-three thing, huh?
Yep, exactly, yes. Yep, and the hitch, you know, so it's like.
Adam, what do you think? Do you understand what they're?
Yeah, I understand what we're talking about, it's just a matter of, do you, I mean, do you think we need the second one? I mean, obviously, we have to buy an attachment to make the first one work. It makes sense to have a piece of wood laying around, not using it. Is this the only company that makes these, or?
Uh, they kind of got the market on, there's, there's an offer in Canada that makes some of it. For some broader reason, they don't sell it in any.
The Road Elephants have these.
Oh, yeah, some of them have them on every machine.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is essentially like the same style as the rolling pack that they have, but they just pull behind sometimes.
Yeah, and you can lift them up rather than drag them behind you, so you can turn around, back out.
Same concept, just made specifically for the plates.
Yep.
You think you'd use it a lot?
Yeah, I mean, when we were using them before, we used it all the time.
You've never had one on the career, have you?
Nope.
I know you went down ladder a few times, because it really helps hold the gravel.
It did, Mark?
Yeah, yeah, it really holds the gravel.
We had a lot of good comments, in the high-traffic areas, we used it a lot. There was a lot of traffic, so we wouldn't have to go back every week, every week, you know?
I don't know, was that one attached?
Uh, about.
I mean, was that, was that our, my normal layer, or did he just come over there and do it one day?
No, it was on his machine, yeah.
I just remember seeing it once or twice, though, I guess I don't have that much attention.
See, that one fit into the pockets on the ripper teeth, but you just take the ripper teeth themselves out and then it fit into the pockets. So it was easy to put on and off.
Yeah, I can see where it could help in, in the high-traffic areas, sure. I mean, they washboards so bad, it's getting the gravel to sit down in there and back back in the, it's gas.
And if there's some moisture.
Yeah, moisture helps, yeah, helps a lot.
We're gonna keep one here in the I-Drive again?
Yeah, we'll have one of those later.
Would you put the other one?
Webster's got the big shop, I don't know. It would have to fit on a cat, so that's Edmore, Webster and Penn. Penn not so much. And Webster comes all the way down to the garbage, the dump ground road, whatever you call it, you know, so they come that part south.
And if you wanted to shift it down, use it for a week or so long, or throw it down below, that just, switch machines or?
Switch machines, or we could unbolt it and bolt it back on. It would fit on the, I don't know if we're going to Edmore shop either. They get pretty long once you get on there.
Well, my concern is, if you put this on two machines, you know, there's four machines out of.
Right.
You know, and it's just like playground, you know? One basketball and eight kids, well, we have problems, but, you know? So if we can move this around and see if we want to put it on every machine, eventually.
We could certainly try that, we'd probably just.
I would like to see, I would like to see people see all the works. Maybe they don't think it's worth a damn, they'll forget it, you know?
Okay, we should set up a plan so we can move it around. Two of them, we should be able to get around the whole county.
Yeah, we'll just make, point ahead of it.
What do you think, Bill?
Yeah, I think so.
But everybody have a.
I know they've always worked, especially, I've seen it work on that Carebird Road that we're talking about there in the past.
Which road?
That Carebird Road up there.
The truck road, yeah.
And I've seen it work on that road and the, the people were really happy from me.
But if we come up with some kind of a plan, I'd be all very, very proud of them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make a point of it, now if we decide to get more than.
Send the guy out this way for a day and let him do what he can do?
Yeah, we'll catch a day when the moisture's good too, so you get a good consequence for what it does.
Take care of the northeast part of the county, just. We're gonna catch a hell if we don't, so.
Well, don't forget the southeast either.
I said the southeast, right, I'm this way, I'm this way.
Yep.
He pointed this way and then he said that.
Pointed that way, but.
Like I said.
We'll just make a point of it, we'll rotate the whole county. We'll do it on wet, on the wet conditions, so.
You want a motion?
I'll make a motion that you, that we purchased both, both the assembly for the John Deeres and then the full set for the, for the cats.
Okay, you got a second, then the figure is?
Thirty-six four ninety.
Six ninety.
Thirty-six six ninety?
Yep.
Not the twenty-eight?
Yeah, both. Fifty-three seventy-fourty-nine.
Three hundred and three hundred and one thousand one fifty, so that's what they're doing. Thirty-six, so it comes to thirty-six six ninety.
Motion of the second, any other discussion? Who's the other, roll call?
Um, Lycox?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Mertens?
Aye.
Isler? Brown?
Aye.
Uh, one other thing I had to tell today, Catpillar has got another trip, climbed the Little Rock, Arkansas, at the John Deere flat. And they have one of their people back out and they wanted to know if anybody was interested in going down there. There's just one seat open.
What days?
Uh, yeah, the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth, like next week, one week from the day.
Adam?
Oh geez, I don't know, I have to look at my schedule, I pay all that work.
Fun for the young guys.
That's pretty quick.
It's pretty interesting, my last year.
I'd be interested in gravelying my schedule and see exactly what I have going on.
Mark?
Nah, I got too much to do.
What did, what did you, what did you have to know?
Yeah, tomorrow morning.
I'll check when I get home, then I'll give you a call.
Okay, that's okay, yep, I'll work.
And what is it, two days?
What's that?
Two days?
Yeah, twenty, you'll be gone the twenty-seventh and then the twenty-eighth.
And we back to twenty-eight?
Yeah, we back to the.
Where is that, you said?
Little Rock, Arkansas, and then the one that Peoria, Illinois, too, at Forge.
Across the river and you fly down.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on their jet. And I think some of the Toward County commissioners are gone, some of Benson County commissioners are gone. I don't know, I don't remember, or maybe some from down south through that, that county.
Eddie?
Eddie.
I gotta check with my boss first, so.
If you can't make it, would the B R I five-one on, I mean?
That's good.
Why not?
They gotta fill the seat.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I got, then.
Kevin, I have one thing for you.
Okay.
Can you, what's most responsible for up there on ten?
That's far enough.
From the, from blading, can you run a blade up there, up to the, on ten, up to the point where the, where the construction starts?
Yeah.
Or it's?
Since he's been hauling gravel, he is responsible.
Okay, or could you get ahold of him? I really appreciate that he stopped trimming his gravel now before they start working on twenty. Because he's getting, he's getting a huge chunk of it over there.
Yeah, plus the load limit is, you know?
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a good time to be doing it, but that road is pretty tough. It's pretty good when the road is finished, but, but till you get to there, it's, it's pretty tough.
Was he still hauling, or he don't use the haul?
He was hauling today.
At least he was today, yeah. So he's probably got a motor grader up there.
But he's driving down that road to himself?
Yeah.
Full traction going over it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And he isn't keeping it smooth for?
He's supposed to be.
For himself, though. You'd think he would definitely want to keep it smooth for himself.
He did have a motor grader there, like December thirty-first.
I don't think there's one there now, but.
I think he moved it out in September.
Yeah, probably moved it out.
It was frozen.
So it's, because it was frozen, but now I think it would bleed.
Yeah, it's warm weather. If not, we'll do it, I mean, we'll, we'll.
I'll figure something out.
Hey, he's done it already.
I'll do that.
I was there today.
Good. We'll get it done. It's supposed to be nice this week, so.
Yeah.
Either he'll do it or we'll do it.
Anything else for Kevin?
Thank you, Kevin.
That will move into the unfinished business. Sheriff's House lease.
One street, Nelson.
You're on the old agenda.
You're on the old agenda.
A few minutes old.
No, I kind of thought Kevin's title was.
I thought I had the right one, I thought you wanted the sheriff's house.
Well, maybe, maybe.
I may, I, I thought you wanted to move back in.
Back in over there? These are the bids for the response card. Uh, the top sheet is the state bid, well, the state is already approved. Uh, there's two on the bottom and then this is for the S U V type, all-wheel drive. And the state bid comes at, depending on where we deliver it to, you have the choice of Fargo, Grand Forks or Bismarck. And they're all, uh, the lowest is Fargo at twenty-six four seven two. That's buying it from Nelson in Ferguson Hall. And then Marketplace Motors put in a bid of twenty-six nine eighty-eight. Which is about five hundred and ten-dollar tire. And the Fargo delivery.
Well, I think we should keep the low.
And then Chrysler's bid for a similar, which would be their Durangle, the all-wheel drive, similar to the, was twenty-eight dollars, forty-one dollars, so.
You gonna have any of those?
Durangles? No. But they're eleven-hundred-dollar tire, and, and.
What did you suggest, Mark?
I, I think we should definitely.
You know, if we, if we buy from, wherever we order from, I mean, we don't have to drive there and get it, then there isn't expense on that, but.
Yeah, two officers, a full day.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're probably.
So we're probably, we're not going to be much money for the, the five hundred dollars.
No, you won't.
Five hundred is the greatest disc, the greatest difference between the high and the low.
Yeah.
The others are less, we have, you know, less difference, so.
What do we have, knowledge of fleet?
We have four, four explorers and one Dodge Charger. And the Dodge Charger will be the next replaced.
You don't have any issues with the Ford, Steve?
We have, having none.
So we're slowly switching over to all?
Well, we're, we're trying to get to all, all-wheel drives.
All-wheel drives, yeah, makes sense.
Trading, you just trade what you got, yeah?
No, we just, we're gonna keep that, then we'll sell the, we've got to rotate them through, so we'll sell our transport car now, that's an O nine. And we'll take the one that we have now, that's in good shape, and we'll make that a transport car, and then we'll sell the other one at a company auction this, next summer. We aren't getting as much to trade in that we, it hasn't been worth, but.
The difference between the all-wheel drive and the two-wheel drive is?
It's amazing, and we're, we're getting, we're averaging twenty miles to the gallon with them, uh, in a month's time. Uh, Chrysler did put in a bid for a pickup that came in about, about twenty-six thousand. But we would, we would lose the gas mileage, you're only going to get fourteen to sixteen versus your twenty. Plus we lose, uh, they knew that their Durangle was going to beat the price, which is high, so somebody can get a pickup, I said, well, put the price in, but, you know, we, we lose all our storage space, uh, all our stuff has to be in the box, the pickup, they'll have to deal with that. You know, get a condo cover or something, so I don't think that's an option for a four-wheel drive. Plus it doesn't make much sense when we're hauling prisoners that we're hauling in the road traffic. It's higher up, it's harder to get it in and out.
Any other questions?
So I guess I'd like, I'd like the board's approval to order a, from Mark Place Four, order the two thousand fifteen Explorer.
I'll make the motion.
Hey, Adam, make the motion, we got a second.
Aye.
I have a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Isler? I, Mertens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Lycox?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Anything else, Steve?
I got one other request, or, um, I have a meeting in Bismarck that I have to go to tomorrow and Thursday. And the city fire called and asked if somebody was down there, they have some, they have a trailer down there, one of the Fish House trailers, that's a prize for the fishing tournament coming up. And they were wondering if we could bring it back for them.
Is my name on it?
No. First question was, was my name on it, so I guess it's part of my house, but no. This is, this is one of the donate, or one of the prizes for the fishing tournament, and I just wanted to make sure it was okay with the commission if I did that and brought it back for them, since I'm down there anyway, if that's okay? I didn't want you guys to get a call saying the sheriff's car is pulling the Ice Castle out, so. I think that'd be, I'd rather you know ahead of time what's going on.
If you called me, I'd say you're taking me fishing.
Well, you have to, but, no, I just wanted to make sure that I was okay with you before we did it there, and, and, let's work it out. Maybe she would find, okay, that's all I had.
Okay, now we go to unfinished business. Sheriff's House lease.
Thank you, I know Commissioner Mertens tabled in in a second for, for you, so.
I didn't, uh, come up with anything other than, I just don't know if it's fair to have leases on anything. If we're not going to have leases on all of our buildings and offices and stuff, but, um, who has the buildings and grounds?
I do.
Do you think that it's fair that we don't have any kind of a estate place in the bar, or? Does she want, does she want a cancel lease? I see in the lease it says thirty-eight hopes, so she could cancel it at any time.
She doesn't want to cancel the lease, she was in again today, she just doesn't want to pay a fee, five thousand dollars, that was years ago. She was agreeing with it, and now, you know, she's taking money into the place, she has, she hires people to run it. We don't have any, we don't have to pay her any of that, she manages it, she keeps it up to par. I mean, she's very good about key, making sure that everything is run right over there. And I even asked Roger what his thoughts were on it, and Roger said, she does a very good job over there, she doesn't request a lot of things for him. And he, he agrees that if she wants to maintain it, keep it, and like right now, she's applying for that grant for the air conditioning system over there. She had us take pictures and she, we got the holes, and she's going to be sending that in this week to see if she can get a hundred percent of it.
So, so my question is, is she willing to take over all the maintenance and pay all the bills and stuff like that in lieu of, in lieu of the lease?
Well, basically, it's a county building, so I don't think she, we can't make her pay any utilities, and they're very little.
She hires the labor, she told me.
Right, she pays for all that.
She sets up the schedule for it to be open. We should be showing a great deal of gratitude to this lady for doing this, um.
What does the city do with Lake Ridge Heritage Center? I don't know. I don't think they have.
Lake Ridge Heritage or that?
Well, the, the whole stop is, they don't pay any, they don't pay any lease over there.
This is a historical building.
Yeah, yeah, well, and that's what I'm saying, that, you know, that's probably why. When we established that, and what we just said at the last meeting, two thousand ten and before that.
That's when a lot of two ten was.
She's, when they came up with kind of the fee that she, and like you said, she's, she did a lot over there, it's nice, it's clean, she, she does the cleaning. I mean, once in a while, she'll request Roger if something goes wrong to help her, which I think he should, because it's. It is our building. It is our building. And I mean, she hires all the people to run it, we don't have anything to do with that, and she's been really good, like the roof, she got us a grant for that, where we only have to pay fifty percent. And right now, there needs some repair on the other side, which I think she's going to help us get a grant for that, to repair it. But it's still our building, you know, we don't want to pay any utilities. Like Otter Tail is probably, in the wintertime, probably, let's see, M D U is higher in the winter, isn't it? M D U's like six, well, M D U's with a regular bill, but Otter Tail is separate, and that runs like maybe twenty-some, and then water bill is very low, because.
But she decides not to do it anymore, or?
She'll just cancel the lease and won't have to take over.
There is no way to do anything with it.
Yeah. And I'm afraid that that's.
Hire somebody to do it?
That's what's going to eventually happen anyway, and.
Well, we all know that.
She has busters come in and look at the building, and she's had two or three busters and slash cars in that were parked out there, and they were just. I visited with a couple of the people and they were, they said it was really a nice place.
I would suggest we set up a lease with no premium, or no payment. Set up a lease without any payment, just for her use.
Roger had no issue with that either, because I asked him if you had time for me, and he said, no, you haven't.
I talked to Roger.
Oh, you did, okay, and he was, he said the same thing to me, that he is not, he said she maintains it very well.
Are we paying part of that air conditioning thing that they're going to put in, I don't, I don't remember that.
No, she said it was probably going to be a percentage, but now she's saying she's trying to pay a hundred percent.
On the grant.
On the grant, for, yeah. And if not, she said she would pay the rest of it, she doesn't want to come in to pay any of the air, and I said, well, and Roger talked to Lonnie about that. And if she wants to do that, Lonnie didn't think there was any problem with it. And she wanted to take care of the air conditioning, but she still would have to have the lease agreement except for the fee.
Well, I know Roger and Veronica did spend a lot of time over there making the building and stuff like that, if we can justify her, you know, her work for that.
But it's our building, it's a county building, you know? It's a historical building, so we can't knock it down, you know, we have to take care of it. And if people are dissatisfied, if it's not taken care of.
Well, that's what I mean, if she's going to take care of it, we don't have to have our own people taking care of it, that's, that's a lot.
I mean, she's essentially doing all the work of running it for essentially nothing.
But she's still going to have Roger mow the grass and.
Yeah, that's understandable, it's still a building.
And water and things like that, because it's part of the whole.
Yeah.
Roger talked to me, he thought there was no need to be paying any of this.
I can't imagine she's making a lot of profit on it, it's just a matter of she likes the history and she wants the building, then Roger can keep it, I can't disagree with that.
I would imagine she was behind getting an historical building, right?
It is a historical, but I mean, she was behind that. Yes, definitely, make it a sample.
Want to make a motion here?
I'll make a motion to, uh, your release.
Just take, I mean, take the lease, but take the, the hand up fee up here.
And, and kind of an answer to yours about the Heritage Center, no, they don't have, but the Heritage Center comes and gets a nice check recorded from them, so.
Exactly, and we turn around and get a check.
Well, the city, the city donates them a check, you know?
Yeah, a check for you, yes, indeed, yeah. I'll second Mark's motion.
Dave, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Uh, C D C board appointment, who got it?
We did get one letter, um, that we have to be on the C D C board, it has sounded lively. Um, I think that's in your packet, but we still need one requisition, we haven't got any other, we have paper and.
Any questions?
So basically, we just need to make a motion to approve if you so choose to have Sandy in there, all made out.
Yeah, motion to grow a packet. Second, appointment to the C D C. Any other discussion?
Somebody's competing.
Would you respond? I imagine it probably.
Both of them want to, I think.
I know, I think we'll put her in Richard Bolt's spot right away, because will your dad stay on until we get somebody?
Should we will.
Okay.
We did your dad's part.
Yeah, you can take your dad's part.
Who often does the C D C meet?
I'll do it.
No, we need Cory.
We're okay there, we're, oh, yeah.
How are you getting on to?
Can we get that done, Elizabeth?
Yeah, so what are we going to do with the other position?
What do you want to do?
Okay, so you want to include that in your motion then?
Yeah, I will, okay. Can I amend my motion to include?
Don't hurt that pressure on this?
Doesn't hurt to have to.
I don't think it hurts to have.
I would think so.
I don't know, I don't know the rules and regulations of the C D C board.
Do we have two commissioners on it then? Does the post your duty, I suppose?
They do anyway, I think.
Very good.
Okay, so that position's around.
Time, you hold it?
Oh, we have that.
I want to make sure they all listen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. New business, approval of mileage rate change, that shouldn't be a problem.
I'm going to vote for it.
A motion to approve.
Fifty-seven point six cents, is that what it is?
Thirty-seven point five.
Wait, that motion to approve, is there a second?
It was fifty-six.
I'll, I'll say.
We got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. All opposed, motion carries. Approval of homestead credit. Four of them?
Three.
Three?
We did have four, but the last one we found.
I'll make a motion to approve the homestead debts.
Second. Motion second.
Who was?
How do you understand this?
Who did you take on?
I.
Did he at first?
I got a research. Oh, okay. He's got a life certificate. There's no certificate. Is there anything filed? Please, yeah, that's kind of life certificate.
Okay.
Kay just asked, uh, the question earlier of Elizabeth that one individual had two, but apparently you can file for back years.
So.
I didn't realize you can file for back years.
Okay, I missed the motion. Who made it?
Uh, Bill.
I'll say.
Sorry. No, I hate asking her questions. Sorry.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Who want to do that next one? Discussion on new notebooks or iPads? Is there a trade in that, do we need some of it?
I don't know, ask. Um.
Trade it?
We can sell them at the, the excess.
They'll be buying from the hot shop. Any other Steve, you said?
Um. Did you get any quote on iPads?
I just got a, yes. Found out what the city got and theirs cost eleven hundred. But, but I guess that's all the information I got. I didn't know what.
What did these cost? Anyone remember?
Um, four seventy nine, four eighty nine?
I think, I think they were four hundred, I think, and then maybe with the covers and.
I remember mine, so.
You already with yours?
Yep.
Well, I'll have to ask my grandson as well.
I read it from last night again to make sure there are provisions still.
Really?
Yeah.
I would like to, I would like to see them updated a little bit as far as the parcel viewer and stuff like that. Did you get anything out of the convention that would help us?
Yeah, I'm working on it, I guess. There's a few kinks to work out, but it should be on next month or so, I guess.
Well, we can, can we save them for another year then? Let them go for another year?
Mine's like you.
Oh, really?
Just like you.
Like it's hardly been moved.
Mine's not. In fact, I would all trade that. One hand's up, you mind taking it for me? So can you update them so that we can have better access to the parcel viewer? And it.
Yeah, I, that's just a web, like updated webpage, but.
Okay.
And, yeah, it will be not flash, which is what it is now.
Okay.
So it will work on.
Oh, there is no flash player on us.
Right.
Yeah. So how's it going to work then if there's no flash player on? It's going to be flash?
It won't be flash.
Oh, it won't be flash?
It's flash currently.
Oh, it's currently flash?
We're going to change the software or the programming.
Okay. All right. Cause I know there's no flash.
No, there's a lot of things that, you know, says, we can't open that file.
Yeah.
That would be a reason to look that up, Katie, but.
And, yeah, and I've been trying to look up some stuff with the, with the legislative session and, you know, you, you can't get it on here.
A lot of, you know, the same. If you just upgraded this, you would have the same issue with flash not working. It's just one of those things that's.
You would have.
It's got, they've gotten rid of it basically now.
Okay.
You would have to go with an iPad or an Apple base. Or a four or what?
No, but Apple stuff doesn't work with flash.
No.
They.
I don't know what, I don't know what the city has. I know that I can get on some of that stuff with, with Tim's. Cause, cause I get to see what I want to occasionally. And I can get on, you know, the legislative sessions and some of the things I want to look at on the internet, but I can't on my own.
They basically have their laptops.
Their, theirs are laptops. I mean, they're, they've got a keyboard, they've, they've, they've got a printer, they've got whatever you want. Um, but I didn't realize they were eleven.
Yeah, that's the other issue with the, you can't print out.
You can't print anything out of them and by the time I get, when I want to print it over to another file so that I can put it on my arcade laptop and get it printed, I'm mad at the world and I don't.
Yeah.
So what do you think, Steve? Just keep what we got?
Okay.
You're the IT, IT person.
Keep looking and see.
Yeah, I.
I mean, if you can find something that has some of more of those features that isn't, you know, quite so expensive. Of course, if these three don't want one, you know, I'd like to find a way to get, like I, like I was going to watch some of the legislative session yesterday and I could not get into it. No, you can't. I, it would not. And I couldn't figure out how to go into YouTube to get back to the session, so. And then I found I just went on a big computer and watched it for a while, but it would have been nice to just sit there and watch it instead of, instead of asking.
Okay, I guess we'll just stay with what we have for now.
He's making a list of the issues and see if you can find something that'll work.
Yeah, well, there's usually some way to work around all of them, but.
Well, I'll just call you from there if you want to block me through.
All right.
Okay, now we'll move into discussion on photos for commission. Who wants, so are we talking about here? Anybody have an idea?
Well, there was a suggestion that we should have a studio photo maybe this year. And I just wanted to bring it with the board before I go in. So I don't know if you wanted to go to the studio or if you want to just do it here, have him come and do it here. Or you might stay with Louise. Something important.
I was going to say she's free.
What, what's the studio thing?
There's a fifty dollar safety charge, so it's not bad. And then you take your, whatever he does for the photos and you take it to Ramsey Photo and he puts it in the frame you want.
But you want it, you, this rule.
You can do that or either you can, we can schedule it so you can go to the studio. He has a studio for his background. I mean, we have pretty good backgrounds. That we can do it here.
You can see out there, there are some that have the more professional background than these two. I did these two here.
We used to go to Liz Webster, if you guys remember.
Liz, I'll look.
Or was anybody on the board when we used to go? We used to go with Liz Webster. She did it in studio. But that's up to the board, so.
I think it's a waste of fifty bucks.
Well, even if he comes here, it's fifty dollars. It's just he touches up the pictures and.
Probably get some Southern American batteries. So much so, you, you can tell who drive off for designs.
No glare.
There's no glare. Yeah, some glasses when they have the big.
Yeah, a lot of people are in scrutinizing.
You'd be surprised how many people are out there scrutinizing.
There's a lot of them.
It's history.
It's history, yes.
That's true.
If you go back to me, see the first ones, they're kind of the old courthouse. Wow.
Should we just wait here and make this decision?
Well, I think we could, so if the board member, you need to have their picture.
Yeah.
Don't wait till the sun comes out a little bit so we look a little better?
She's been tanning. I thought you were putting me, cause I'm working on my tan.
You're working on your tan, no. Okay, what do we want to do?
Should we just table it till April, May, and you guys? Think about it one night, you want to do one, then I can call ahead of time.
Okay.
Okay?
I was drilling hard up the pictures. I didn't laugh. Was he drilling hard up the pictures in the paper?
No.
I have plenty.
No, he doesn't.
So make sure somebody contacts me before we decide to do it.
Review letter from trainer and loafer. The annexation. Anybody have any questions about it?
Were we supposed to approve it?
It says for your guys' review.
Right.
What's the letter about?
Just shows you where they're at.
Probably the annexation. I was curious if they annexed to the center.
That forty acre zone in the middle?
Here.
Oh, I got that.
It's not.
We did the center, uh.
This is the change, they're adding just these where they've got four, five, six, seven, S. And S. And that's like this, the thirty three feet stuff.
Well, where's that at? Do you have that up? Is it so clear?
Yes, Steve can put it in this one, right?
Yeah, it's the center of the road on the north side.
It's a black one.
And then it's thirty three feet east of the line.
On the north and south is thirty three feet east and, east and west. On the north and south is to the center of the road.
I think that's how I understood it.
Run that by me again.
On the north, on the east and west road, on the north side of the annexation. East and west road.
The truck route there.
Truck route. He said it's to the center.
Yes, that's how I understood it, because it's, it's just they're, they're annexing the actual corridor.
Corridor, yeah.
So if they're annexing the corridor, they're only annexed to the line. So it'll be up to the midline of the road, basically, of the truck route.
Yep.
And then where you drive in on the south side there, up the whole east side, they're annexing thirty three feet to the east of the line.
Yep.
Cause they need a corridor to run all the piping and everything up and.
Yep.
And that's going to affect the people that live there.
Yeah.
The tree, the trees are right up in the line.
I think that there was a.
They won't have to do right away then.
There was a meeting yesterday because they want them to.
Some people sold the road to, to the township.
How does this go?
Well, there was never a road, or.
Please want them to take the infrastructure and move it on the west side of the road so that it doesn't interfere with their grow of trees.
Uh, let's get that again. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
And in order to do that, they, it's going to come from the south, right here. It's going to come from the south. And fees want them to move it over on this side of the road and then back over to the other side of the road so it doesn't affect their trees.
They want it to, they want it to shift when it gets north of their lot, basically.
Or is it going to affect their trees?
Cause their trees are planted, their trees are planted right up to the section line.
Yeah, right up onto the section line.
Instead of offset thirty three feet.
Right.
Instead of the thirty three foot offset that's supposed to be there because it's a section line.
What? There's one row over the section line?
There's one row that's on the section line.
Yes, it's, yeah, it's, it's just.
There's no argument there.
Yeah, it's, it's close to the section line.
There's really no argument, any of it. Fifteen to thirty three feet, they could knock them all out. There's nothing, anybody.
And I know that nobody wants to make any demands.
That part we could do it up to the city, but I was curious how the truck route itself was.
Going to be.
And if you guys are okay with that, that's fine. Just so everybody knows, that's how it's going to be.
On the truck route, would you say don't count it?
It's to the center of the road. So they'll have half the road in the city and half the road.
In the county.
The county.
You regulate, use the old city.
We see, we have a lot of them like that around town, you know.
Don't check. And.
Yeah, that's kind of what.
They're, they're just taking the north half of section twenty one, fifty four, sixty four. So it would just be the section line.
Section line.
It's not thirty three off.
So if it's half and half, who takes care of it?
Who split the top?
And we have been splitting the top.
Well, that's spelled out in the agreement.
We already have agreement on that, don't we?
It's different, there were all, but the agreement says who's responsible for the lead.
Right.
Lead on the.
So you guys are in a little committee, right?
Yeah.
So that's fine. As long as everybody knows I have ahead of time. Which is, we, we do it all over town.
So relatively going to make it a lot simpler.
Yep.
So is there any more talk about, um, annexing this forty acres here in the middle of this?
Well, that's Elizabeth just, I didn't hear that.
They included this piece right here?
Yep, on the new map they did.
And they got the okay for the last year?
Piece is my understanding. Their terms, or is it my?
No, Horton's, well, it's over there.
Horton's.
Dennis.
That little square, they included that up in, thanks to you. What he's got up there on the map. Yeah, right there. That's it.
That little square, in the first map, there in the middle. In the first map, it wasn't included on there and they hadn't. They hadn't contacted Mertens about annexing it.
I heard that.
The last I heard, but.
I heard that today, but.
That they haven't contacted them yet?
Well, it was second hand, but yes, it was today.
Is that letter, Sam, the bottom, it's a.
He's really not going to have anything to say about getting an annex to your city.
No, maybe he won't, but.
No, you're right.
You know.
There's a cover letter. Is it Sam there who will adopt the cover letter? The trainer?
Well, I think that was on the annex.
No, I think so.
Oh. Nope, it isn't on there. Okay.
I remember him saying though, that we got a letter.
You remember Dennis saying that?
No, at the last zoning board meeting, I think, uh, the secretary there. She said, Helen said she sent letters to everybody, including you.
Oh, okay.
She emailed me this stuff too because I requested it, just to see.
Any other discussion on it?
So we don't have to vote to allow it? And what, okay, they just did it?
No, I should leave, not real. But I don't think they have yet.
Well, I don't think they're going to because I think it's more cost than to allow it than not.
No other discussion? Okay, that one we're going to review our approved bill to the city of Illinois. We never did this one?
She didn't.
I have a poll that we didn't have, okay?
We didn't have it. So, there's two of them. And I went through them and they all, they looked good.
Motion for the bills for the local stations.
Okay, our motion number second. Any other discussion?
So how come it went up so much from?
In July, I mean, in July, what? It's because they didn't charge us for the thirty percent county embankment. And then if you look at the Creel Lapsation, I don't think it was completely finished. Now it's a country club Lapsation. There's different.
We got different, different.
Different stuff.
No, maybe different spots.
Okay. And then this one for the third quarter in two thousand fourteen, which is being built now, the ten thousand dollar one.
Yep.
That you'll see there's labor in there and we paid thirty percent of whatever the labor is. And I went through all of those and I checked them and there exactly what they should be.
Okay.
Just a quick question. Where it says county share eight percent and then county share thirty percent, then it has a number next to it. What, what is that in relation to then?
So are we looking at which one?
Uh, the one from January.
January. Okay. So that would be the fourth quarter of two thousand fourteen.
Correct.
Okay, so total is eleven thousand and if you take thirty percent of that eleven, oh wait, that's not right. I gotta look at this. There's three different things.
So, so we pay thirty percent on all embankment up needs maintenance, that we pay eight percent of the. So we paid thirty percent on all embankment of maintenance, then we pay eight percent of the.
Electricity depreciation.
Well, then if the total is seventy-six, forty-two and eight percent of that is six hundred eleven plus the thirty-three, why do we owe ten thousand? Shouldn't it be like four thousand?
No, it's, you pay the south lift station where a hundred percent liquid, a hundred percent country club is.
Hundred percent.
Oh, so it's the eight percent of just the Creel basis?
The Creel business.
Okay, I understand. I was sitting there going, the numbers in maintenance.
And then, and then if you see the embankment, this is a workforce and then the dike maintenance and then spray. And then we divide that by thirty percent.
So it's. It's twenty-eight, thirty-three, three, sixty-five, six, eleven, thirty. Okay, okay, again.
It's confusing when you first look at it.
Yeah, I didn't realize that that was the only one we had share on, on eighty percent.
And I had to go through the agreements because I thought it was twenty-five percent, but no, it was thirty percent and they were restarting, so.
Any other discussion on it?
Do, somebody with a motion. Morton's and then Olson, so it's just a matter of roll call. Iceberg, Lifeline, Olson, Mertens, Brown.
Okay. Rule of events for special event, oh, it's the rule of events for pros.
Shiverfest, first and twenty-second.
Are those their fun hockey again?
Fun.
Oh, they did put in something out on the ice or?
They put a big tent up all on the ice.
Ice or what? I'm sure.
It's on the ice.
Let's go to the second.
Motion second to all fair say on.
I.
All bold motions carries. Announcements?
Well, just so the board knows, if they announce that we.
Oh, yeah.
Law enforcement center board, we sat down, proud to, we're gonna have interview on Friday, you know, one candidate that we brought forward or gone to bring forward tomorrow. Two didn't have enough education, who required a full year degree and two did not have that. Not enough experience. Figure that always seems to be the hot topic, so we should know before we.
Where, do you have any updates on the general potential?
Not a lot, I guess. We've got people going to training. We have to get that done first.
Okay.
And then we've got some ideas on how to remodel the jail, I guess. Well, we were waiting for this new administrator to get on.
We got the okay from the state. States, our plan, the way we wanted to remodel it was acceptable to them.
It's good, so. State's alright with it. Ian is alright.
Yeah, Ian. Ian was gonna put some laws, yeah, and put some different laws and we didn't know if we'd have to put block walls in or new walls in the way with just wood walls.
You still have to spend the twenty thousand dollars on the suspended ceiling?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Fifty thousand dollars.
But you know, none of that.
Steel plated.
None of that really has been set and stoned.
We haven't had.
We haven't had an architect. We haven't done the correct way. I mean, these were just figures put together so we had something to look at.
We'll see where we have this, we just administrator job filled and go over there. And like we decided on last Friday, we'll make the one interview and see what happens. Board, if the committee isn't happy, we'll cross that bridge in. Cross that bridge in, so. Any other announcements?
Well, I sat on my first legislative council meeting, my second one. Got pretty confused. There's some bills that are, that are important to us. I'm sure Betty's up on the run about the game of fish licenses, phasing all of the auditor's offices having to do um the bill on, on Mills Desents has now gone appropriations because they said unless the state's gonna pay for the software and the computers to do that, that that is not a fair, that's not a fair thing to expect the counties to pay for. It's another huge underfunded mandate, so that is now in appropriations where we all expect it to be. That's what I was told. Our legislators are sponsoring a bill eleven ninety-seven, House Bill eleven ninety-seven to provide for prohibition of conservation easements using public funds to purchase private land. It's a it gets at a lot of the measure five issue and prohibits it from happening. Where you can't, you can't use tax money to buy private land without leveling the playing field with private landlords. And I think that's a direct spin off of that land of new trine ownership. But there's quite a few legislators sponsoring it and behind it pretty diligently. There's some funny ones like gravel loads must be covered and the assumption of social service grants. And then I guess the big thing that is the big issue right now is blending the governor's budget, proposed budget with, with the search funding. We'll get more money on the governor's budget than we will for search funding, so we're hoping the governor's budget is gonna go through.
Well, I'm sure that's open here, but.
It is, it is open here, but with every day that oil prices go down, I'm sure that there's more trepidation about whether or not we should put that in.
Kevin, I appreciate this comment. I listened to the radio the other day and a lady called in and she told the host that why don't the big oil companies pay for fixing these roads out there? They're the ones that are beating them up. They're the ones that are making the money off of township, county, state highways. Why the hell aren't they fixing them? You know, they're making the millions and billions.
Well, and they're the ones that are taking the pants out of the roads, you know, they're the ones that are, you know, destroying the roads. You know, if we have, if we have a construction person that's destroying the roads, it's a bill right in there that says you pay for it. And if you wreck it, you fix it when you're done.
That's not gonna fly, I'm sure, but.
Well.
Some of the unorganized townships, they end up paying for them, but special cases, very seldom. Just because there wasn't nobody that would step in and do it for them.
Or who pays for them on reservation out there?
I bet they do. They're the companies who.
I'd like you to see that. A whole lot of reservation.
The New York Times article indicates the tribe has paid for a lot of the road repair and more not fix them. Those five articles in the New York Times, did you get a chance to read those?
No, maybe.
Oh, yeah, they were.
Couple months ago?
No, December, November or December, I think.
Not, not good. Made us kind, it made the whole state look pretty bad, actually.
Well, it made Old Tech look real bad now, it's.
And the governor, actually.
And the governor.
Which was, I don't know if that's fair or not, but he didn't come out looking very good with the New York Times article.
That lady on the radio, she was very blunt.
Well.
It made a lot of sense.
And then the other one is, is, you know, the big push right now is to get the legislature, legislature to meet every year. You can't deal with this magnitude of problems and then set them on the back shelf for a, for an entire year and then come back and try catch up all the time. It's getting to the point where there, you know, there's some serious discussion about having two shorter sessions, one each year. And then, and rather than, rather than, than one ninety day session.
There's two separate bills that have been introduced.
Yeah.
One that goes sixty, twenty, and one that goes fifty, thirty.
Fifty, thirty, yeah.
At the legislative council, did you talk in about the Department of Corrections budget? Cause there is a quota system that they're putting in there.
Yeah.
What was the deal coming off of that?
Um, I don't know that that bill's been talked about yet.
It's House Bill, let's see here. Ten fifteen, we had hearings already last week.
They did? And the human.
Steve was going down.
Most appropriations, human resources, that they were looking at.
I think Steve's working on that. We go down this way.
Yeah, I'm sure he is.
Yeah.
Well, and again, you know, if that's just fine to limit how many people you can send to the state penitentiary, but if you're gonna limit that, then you have to provide services necessary to the local, at the local facilities, cause it's the biggest reason a lot of people get sent is so that they can receive the mental health services that are not available here.
I think Steve is gonna address that tomorrow morning at our law conference. I know he is.
I'm sure he is, yeah. We've talked about it before.
We talked about it before.
But just was curious if they had any feeling for what was gonna happen.
We didn't, we didn't talk about that.
I think it's on, is it on Thursday? Or we just talked to Steve about it. It's on Thursday or Friday.
Thursday or Friday, cause he's gonna be thrilled that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, they haven't taken any action on it.
It's on Thursday.
Beginning hearing.
Yeah.
I got to look at my.
Yeah, cause tomorrow was his sheriff's meeting and then Thursday.
And then Thursday. Do you have any notebook that is still on there?
Oh, gosh.
It's at my side sent to me.
The, the judge is going to be against it.
Yeah.
I just don't think they're gonna, gonna get a lot of traction without support of the law, you know, sheriffs are against it. I can't believe it's gonna float.
Yeah.
So all over the state, the legislators are talking about getting more money for local incarceration. Human, human services.
Ten fifteen, yes. No, it's not on the Thursday document. It's not on the Friday document.
I agree with you.
Now, if this worked, we can put it on the video and do it.
Did anybody go down yesterday for that?
I'm actually, no, I actually might be going on Friday, so I can see if there's something more.
Were you down this mark yesterday, Rob?
No.
Okay. How did that go? Were you able to listen to it? I couldn't get on, so.
There's been a lot of hearings on it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you guys were talking about.
Human services.
Human services, they had like in the harvest coming yesterday.
You know, funding through the appropriations side on the bite out.
Yeah.
That's got a number on it now.
Ten twelve.
It was ten twelve.
It's in poll?
Yep.
They haven't taken any action yet.
It's basic, no, it's basically hearings all week.
Oh.
Yeah, it was constant. It was just not working with you.
You can't, there's no recording. It's in committee.
It's in committee.
You can't watch it.
It's not recording.
Uh, there's no recording, no videos?
We, we have a, a member of our association, the county director is Sandy Bendewell from Steptown County is there. I haven't read it. She hasn't written anything. I checked before I came down. You know, there's a lot of, we were talking about the incarcerations. That's gonna be a big political game. Because I think some of the big players in appropriation get it, that all, all of the counties wanna build jails. And they want money from the state. They want a one-time appropriation for jails and they're kind of done with building jails. And I think they, I think there's some push and pull between the two state entities to force the hand of the human services to do something because the Department of Corrections is, is very frustrated also with the lack of treatment for folks. So that, that's a real interesting dynamic.
Lockwood City's trying to build a jail.
Roulant County wants a jail too. I think their legislators are pushing for some money, a one-time appropriation also, if I'm not mistaken. So.
I think they're trying to win this surge.
And early war, they want them together.
The House side and the Senate side, there's a twenty twelve that's related to human services.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty twelve. You're right, I'm sorry.
And it's county reimbursement for its expanded. Yeah, they haven't taken any action on it yet, but they actually have hearings on it. The hearing's on it still tomorrow, so you're gonna be able to take some action tomorrow.
Yeah, and the jail one was, was the thirteenth and fourteenth within committee.
Yeah. And they can push it, table it and go until later, because it's probably got a fairly decent appropriation.
And the second bill we wanna watch with that surge versus governor's bill is twenty-one oh three, if you wanna check on that.
That's the surge?
That's the infrastructure funding bill, where you wanna blend the governor's bill and Rich Waters' bill, which is.
Yeah, we're gonna blend the surge funding.
Okay, any other announcements? Good? Our East Commission meeting tomorrow.
Is everybody gonna be in the same order as ever? Five?
I hope we'll be there.
Okay.
Okay, we're done.
Evan is coming?